Good evening. My name is Melissa Williams and I serve as the President of the Washington County Board of Education. This evening, I welcome the members of the Board of Education, the Superintendent, staff, and the community to the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting. Everyone is participating in this meeting using a telephone or an electronic device. It has always been the practice of the Washington County Board of Education to meet in person and to invite members of the public to the Board's meetings. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, certain legal directives, and the need to safeguard the health of the community, it is necessary to participate in this public meeting by phone or an electronic device. This evening's business meeting will be recorded, and the public may access the public meeting now on Channel 99, Facebook, and on the WCPS website. The public comment portion of this meeting will not take place. The Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing and the information will be distributed to Board members and to the Superintendent. At this time, I call to order this Public Business Meeting of the Washington County Board of Education, and I'll call the roll so that we may determine if we have a quorum of members present. This time, if you would just answer aye, Mr. Bickford?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Gassford?
Aye.
Mrs. Murray?
Aye.
Mr. Stauffer?
Aye.
Dr. Zedmeyer?
Aye.
Okay, we have all members present. We do in fact have a quorum. Do we have our student representative with us this evening? Mr. Bakum, are you there?
Yeah, yes, I'm here. I'm just on a phone right now.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, we're glad you're with us. At this time, Board Member Mike Gassford will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have approval. Is there a motion for approval?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Do we have any discussion, any questions about the agenda? All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Okay, so we have unanimous approval. Mr. Bakum, do you concur?
Yes, I'm raising my hand to show that.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm not seeing that. I see it now, thank you. We'll move to approval of the minutes.
Madam President, I move for the approval of our minutes dated, give me one second here, dated Tuesday, December the 15th, 2020.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Zedmeyer. Do we have any additions or corrections to the set of minutes for the work session of December 15th, 2020? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor? Okay. Those have been unanimously approved. With the student member concurring.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the second approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, December 15th, 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the closed session of December 15th, 2020? Okay, then we'll move for a vote of approval. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous, and the student member does not vote on closed session minutes. Back to you, Mr. Gassford.
And finally, on the third motion for the approval of business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, December 15th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second to Mr. Gassford's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of December 15th, 2020? Okay, all those in favor of approval? Okay, they're unanimous with the student rep concurring. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gassford. As mentioned earlier, the public comment portion of this meeting will not take place. However, the Board of Education encourages the public to submit their comments in writing to W, I'm sorry, to BOE@WCPS.k12.md.us. Again, that's BOE@WCPS.k12.md.us. We have no old business to conduct this evening, so we'll move then to new business, and our first item of consideration is a memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2020-2021, 2021-2022, and 2022-2023 school years.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Williams. Board members, tonight, we're seeking your approval on a MOU, a memorandum of understanding that reflects Article 17 of the Washington County Educational Support Personnel's contract. In short, this would change a little bit about what we're negotiating for this year. This is not a contract for next year yet, but it changes and adjusts how we're going to negotiate for the upcoming school year and for the out year after that, 2022-23. And we're seeking your approval this evening. I think the President of the Educational Support Personnel, Mrs. Hines, is on, and we certainly want to acknowledge her cooperation and Mr. Bowers' cooperation in reaching this MOU this evening, and again, we're seeking Board approval at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Is there a motion for approval?
Mrs. Williams, I move to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel for the 2020-2021, 2021-2022, and the 2022 and 2023 school years.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second to Mrs. Murray's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Discussion? Right, then we'll move to the vote. We're voting on approval of the memorandum of understanding between the Washington County Board of Education and the Washington County Educational Support Personnel Group for the years read by Mrs. Murray. All those in favor? Right, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs. Thank you. Mr. Bowers, Mrs. Hines, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our second item of consideration this evening is the proposed academic year calendars for 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023, with Dr. Pew presenting.
President Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the Board, I'm here to ask for your review and approval of the proposed school calendars for the 2021-22 and the 2022-23 school years. As the staff liaison for the Calendar Advisory Committee that was selected by the Board on November 3rd, I'm pleased to bring you two consecutive school year calendars for Washington County Public Schools that the committee developed within the legal parameters and the contractual provisions as charged. I would like to thank the representative members of the committee who dedicated their time and effort into understanding the Annotated Code of Maryland, the negotiated agreements with the educational support personnel and teachers, as well as the testing calendar. The advisory committee met on November 9th and again on December 7th to prepare the calendars and to meet the numerous legal and contractual requirements. On behalf of the Calendar Committee, I'm asking for your approval of the 2021-22 and 2022-23 calendars.
Thank you, Dr. Pew. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the proposed academic year calendars for 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second to Mr. Bickford's motion?
I'll second.
I'm sorry, was that you, Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
Thank you. Any questions or any discussion? Mr. Gassford?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I do have a couple of questions, just for clarification. I noticed that on the first calendar, the 21-22 year, in October, there is a professional day on the 14th. Then on the 2022-2023 calendar, in that same month, there is no professional date listed. I was wondering why that is, and also, in the 2020 calendar year, I'm sorry, 2022 calendar year, for the break, the spring break, it gives the 14th of April and the 15th of April, but then in the 2023 calendar, it gives a teacher's professional day and then one day for Good Friday, and then the Monday. I was wondering why that was decided that way, and then, just a comment, I always advocate for Veterans Day, and it never happens, and I just, I've always been a person supporting Veterans Day, and I know that we have some programs, we don't have as many as we've had in the past, and I just wish that we would have more, you know, respect for our veterans and having that. So I'll leave that statement alone, but I'd like to have clarification on the other, the first two items.
Sure. So the October dates, in the first calendar, in the 2021-22, it's October 14th is professional day, and what they were trying to do, each year, you have 10 professional days, trying to make sure that they're spread out, but at the same time maximizing the number of full weeks for students. So the committee determined to put that professional day in the subsequent year, and it actually extends the first marking period a few days in November to align it with the election day that is on the 7th. Then your second question about spring break, where they have the professional learning day for teachers in the April day, and they don't have that in April on the first calendar, 21-22, and that is because the professional learning day, they had moved into the, into the March timeframe. They also, one of the things that really took a good deal of time was working with the ESP to make sure their non-paid, non-work day didn't fall in a week when they already had a day that would be off, so that their pay would stay more consistent. The third question, or your statement, I fully understand and appreciate the schools definitely want to support Veterans Day, and many of the schools did have and do have large programs that students participated in honoring both their family members as well as their school and community members for their service. So I agree with you.
Are there any further questions? Okay, then we'll move to the vote. The motion is for approval of the proposed academic year calendars for 2021, 2022, and 2022, 2023. All those in favor? Right, we have a unanimous approval, and the student rep? I'm not seeing your hand, Mr. Bakum. Are you still there, Mr. Bakum? I see him now.
Yes, I'm still there.
Thank you. So the decision is unanimous with the student rep concurring. Our third agenda item of new business is a First Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Smithsburg Athletic Boosters Club, Inc., with Mr. Jeffrey Prue, Chief Operating Officer, presenting. Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the Board. First item I have for you this evening is this First Amendment to the MOU with the Smithsburg Athletic Booster Club. By way of background, the Board entered in the original memorandum of understanding on February 25 of 2019 for the purpose of erecting a new concession stand, team rooms, athletic trainers, and referee locker room, and new ticket office. The Smithsburg Athletic Boosters have since presented to staff to increase the scope of that project, to include a new synthetic turf football field, all-weather track, resurfacing and widening the all-weather track, new stadium lighting, scoreboards for the football stadium, as well as the baseball and softball fields, and also refurbished the press boxes and backstops for baseball and softball. The scope of the project has increased to $3.7 million, and there is no additional monetary increase requested from the Board of Education above what's already been granted in the first memorandum. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have. And also on the call tonight are Mr. Rob Rollins, Director of Facilities Planning and Development, and Mr. Mike Stauffer, Director of Operations. If there are questions concerning any of the design process or construction.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam President, I move to approve the First Amendment to Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Smithsburg Athletic Booster Club Incorporated.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Is there a second to Mr. Stauffer's motion? Thank you, Dr. Zedmeyer. We'll open the floor for questions and discussion. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I, first, I would like to, my understanding is there's probably some money being donated by people in the community. First, I'd like to give my greatest appreciation. It's probably not comparable to the kids that will be able to enjoy it, so you know, it's very generous, especially in these times, to be able to donate that kind of money, to be able to expand the project the way it is, so it's, I think that's incredible, and it says a lot to whoever is able to do that. My concern, however, is the artificial turf field. It is obviously up for debate on how safe they are and the effectiveness. I, that is a concern of mine, being a player and a coach. I have, I personally have grown to strongly dislike them, and you know, the, I'm concerned about the kid's safety of the turf fields, given that there are many NFL teams in particular that have converted from turf to natural grass, and the NFLPA just a couple of months ago even requested that all of the stadiums, even the dome stadiums, go to grass. So, you know, I have concerns about the safety, and while it's extremely generous that the money is being donated, at the end of the day, we're still going to have to go and replace it in the future, and we're adding costs that, you know, in the future that, you know, we, we're not really sure how it's going to be. So I wonder if it's possible to maybe even save a little bit of money and make some renovations to the field so that they are in better playing condition with some of that money, and even save a little bit of money moving forward, rather than have, having to do the artificial surfaces.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Any other question, any other discussion? Mr. Gassford? I'm mute. There you go.
My first question would be to Mr. Prue, what is the money that the Booster Club decided to put back each year for the maintenance of the field?
So moving forward in the addendum, the Booster Club is going to, at the time that the Board awards contract for the installation of the turf field, they will provide us the funding for the turf field as well as $200,000, which is somewhere between 30% and 50% of the anticipated cost of the replacement of the field 10 years out. They're also providing $15,000 in a dedicated maintenance fund for any maintenance or repairs that need to be done on the field during its first surface.
So, just, I'm clarifying, so the first, when they laid the field down, and in the first year, there's a rip, they're going to use that $15,000 to repair that?
That's correct.
Okay, and then there's going to be an additional $200,000 set aside to go towards the replacement of a new turf field after it's determined 10 years or so.
That's correct, and that money will be provided to the Board of Education at the time that you award the contract for the construction of the first field, and the Board will hold that money in a dedicated account for when it's time for the replacement somewhere in the future, eight to 12 years.
So that means we will need to budget additional monies to cover the balance of the replacement of that field, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so then we have North High Stadium, that's, we're in the same situation, and we probably will be having more stadiums throughout the county that will require that also. Are we, we're talking a substantial amount of money, even if it's staggered, it's probably going to be in the neighborhood of about $1 million a year? If we're, if we're staggering these out, is that about right?
A replacement is probably somewhere in the window between 4 and 600,000. So we have seven high schools with stadiums, so in total, if you, if you took the high side of 600,000 for seven fields, that's 4.2 million over 10 years. So you're somewhere in the ballpark. If you had them staggered, on average, about $400,000 a year.
So that's something that we need to address starting in the next budget cycle, that if, if we're going to be doing that, we need to be anticipating that, that increase. Is that correct?
I would say that's accurate, yes.
Okay, okay, and my, my, my second question would be, I noticed that in the naming rights of, for the schools, and asking for money, is that in line with our other, other asks of other schools? Are we, are we allowing them to choose what they want?
Are you talking about the next agenda item?
No, I'm sorry, you're right, that's it. I'm sorry, I do apologize. That is the next question. Thank you.
Mrs. Murray, I see your hand. Thank you, Mr. Gassford. Mrs. Murray, I see your hand.
Yes, Mr. Prue, what is the approximate amount that we spend on the seven high school fields for maintenance and re-sodding and all of those things per, per year?
I would wager to say, to some research we've done specifically on the Smithsburg field, that for seeding, watering, irrigation, overseeding, insect control, so on and so forth, cost for water is in the ballpark between 20 and $25,000 per field. So approximately 150,000 a year for seven fields.
Thank you.
Mr. Stauffer?
Yes. As a former coach, a high school soccer coach, 27 years, I, I have some worries about playing on artificial turf. I have problems playing on grass. I can tell you this, with all the use that these fields get, the grass fields get, you don't have that problem with an artificial turf field. For instance, at Smithsburg, you would have football, and you would have boys and girls, JV and varsity soccer, playing on that same field and so forth. And I know at Williamsport, where I coached for all my 27 years, and again, nothing against the football program or anything, but sometimes football would play when it was raining, and then you would have, we would have a soccer game on, say, Monday night, and we would come in, and there would be ruts in the field and so forth. And I always did worry about my soccer players running down the field, dribbling the ball full speed, and suddenly, there's a drop-off just enough. You're looking at breaking an ankle, twisting an ankle, some other type of injury. So there, there's all kinds of pros and cons to do this. And Mr. Gassford and Mr. Evans are correct when they talk about the, the cost of these fields. I have that same worry, but I don't know, if the Smithsburg people want that and so forth, and there is money coming in, you know, I hate to, would hate to turn the offer of that money down. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Dr. Michael?
I think Board members, as I've counseled before, you know, really, public-private partnerships are up to the Board to make the decision. I think from an economic standpoint, this is a hard decision to make, especially with our current financial situation. But the, probably the comment that I generally make, I think you've heard me say before, is it a gift too good to turn down? I love seeing our students have quality facilities, whether that's a beautiful classroom, you know, auditorium, stage theater, athletic facilities, those types of things. I am concerned for the long term, based on our current long-term capital financial situation, what we're going to provide, what our facilities will look like long term. In this situation, again, this consideration is a too-good a gift to turn down. You know, I don't want to make an argument one way or the other, but at least for 10-plus years, our students are going to have an excellent facility, and there's seed money for the next step to replace the field. So actually, it's probably extending all the way to, you know, 15 years worth of time. Not 15 years a field will last, but the money is there for 15 years to maintain a beautiful facility. It's a substantial lift on the Smithsburg community to come up with this money. I hope that they're able to do that. That'll be the next step in this process. Can they provide this? So I think our investment, Mr. Prue, is how much exactly? It's written on the sheet, I know it is.
There's 350 coming, 350,000 coming as a grant from the Board of Education, and 175,000 from the Smithsburg High School Athletic Funds.
But the lift for the project of turf and those types of things in total, coming from the community, would be?
The community's portion is 3.1 million dollars.
So if the whole project- So if the whole project comes together, um, we want to turn down a gift of over $3 million now, granted, that's the whole project coming together, including turf, the buildings, everything. And our investment in total as a Board of Ed, at least on the initial part, again, Mr. Evans is correct, Mr. Gessford's absolutely correct. We need to think long-term costs will eventually have, you know, roof over the concession stand, various things like that to maintain someday the field to maintain. But if the community would support this with $3 million, is it too good of a gift to turn down for us to invest, you know, our portion of that money? So it's something to consider as we think about all PPPs, um, you know, certain way of getting things done that we aren't able to or, um, in every location. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Evans?
Yeah. So I'll go back to my original question. Is, is this vote going to kind of lock in that the turf, if we do this, would kind of be a staple in this agreement? Or is it still possible that we can reconsider and look at other options as far as keeping the natural grass?
I would say a, it's a difficult question because a, a vote of yes to this amendment sets the wheels in motion for the design and then the future construction of the turf field. All of that, again, is contingent on the fact that the community is able to raise the money, uh, that they need for the, the improvements to take place. The $350,000 grant from the board on this project is dedicated to the original PPP items, which is the concession stand, the team rooms, the training facilities, the get, the ticket office. So the, the field itself is a complete lift from the community itself. So, uh, while your, your yes vote today, your affirmative vote today sets the wheels in motion for that to happen, uh, the community does still have to raise the money before it comes to fruition. And if the, that phase of the project runs over budget, the community has to raise that money as well.
And Mr. Prue, the board will have another opportunity. I think we want to make sure we do things in good faith. Uh, the board will have another opportunity when the turf field is bid to approve the field.
That's correct.
The purchase of the, of the turf.
That's correct. The Board of Education is in charge of the project.
Right. So I mean, there'd be an opportunity if you chose at that point to turn it down for some reason. I think we'd want to make sure we're exercising this agreement in good faith. So it's probably this end that we do that. But again, to Mr. Evans' question, we certainly can do more research, um, can go, even go back to the boosters, even with the agreement. Are we sure we don't want to do this? And/or if they can't raise all the money, you know, would it be better to re-sod the whole field, put a new enhanced effort into irrigation, drainage, whatever it might be, uh, still addressed to track something different than artificial turf? But I think, uh, Mr. Evans, at the point we agree to this, uh, I think it's a good faith indication that we would support whatever we have in the agreement if the community comes through with their portion.
Mr. Gessford, I see your hand.
Yes. Um, I guess basically I want to say that I'm going to support this, um, only because I, I, I hope that the, the, the community of Smithburg continues to prosper. And I think that, um, we need to, um, help them as much as possible. But my, my final question would be, um, I know, Mr. Prue, you have met with them, um, the boosters. Do you know how they plan to raise this money? Cause this is a lot of money for parents who are going to be a four-year, you know, commitment for parents that are coming in with a freshman football player. And then if they don't have any other children, they'll be out. So how do you think they're going to continue to raise this money long-term to keep this, this project moving? Or do they have the money now? Do you know?
Uh, the boosters have a, a substantial portion of funds available at this current juncture. They have been talking with several donors, uh, both for monetary donations as well as in-kind donations. So, uh, for instance, there may be contractors, uh, based out of the Smithburg area or just in Washington County in general, that have an interest in supporting youth athletics that, uh, may make donations of services towards the construction. So it might be excavating, it might be roofing, it might be masonry work. So any of those are possibilities as we work through this project. My understanding is they have been in, in discussions with a donor, uh, for a significant portion, uh, to really kickstart the project. Uh, I'm not privy to who that donor is, uh, but my understanding is it's, it's a potentially six or seven-figure donor.
Yes.
Yes, Dr. Michael.
I, I might add, you know, one thing we're enjoying, we're learning lessons all along the way as we've kind of got into our public-private partnerships. And one lesson we've learned, uh, Mr. Gessford, that might help answer your question a little bit, uh, we, in all these more recent agreements, we are securing the money before we move forward. So with the exception of the loan part, uh, on the revolving loan account that they may take advantage of, all the other money is upfront. So it's not money that we have to rely on from people five, six, seven, eight years down the road. The substantial part of the money is not. Uh, and that's a lesson we've learned over time, you know, get the money upfront, uh, for the most part, and make those types of commitments. We learned that on the Boonsburg project and it's, it's hard to believe it was four or five years coming together, but I think that's going to become a reality real soon. And we're very excited about the Boonsburg project. Like again, so I think some of the fear that I would have where we'd be stuck with the bill is mitigated in this agreement. Uh, I think Smithburg historically has demonstrated they can raise money. They have a, a number of stable fundraisers that raise money every year. I think it's going to rely heavily on these donations on this front end. And again, that'll fall to Smithburg to come up with that.
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Are there any further questions? Any further discussion? All right, then we'll move to the vote. The motion is to approve the First Amendment to Memorandum of Understanding by and between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Smithburg Athletic Boosters Club, Inc. All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote. The student member concur. All right, we'll move next. Under consideration, the naming rights agreement by and between the Board of Education of Washington County and Smithburg Athletic Boosters Club, Inc. Mr. Prue?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. So this is a follow-up to the, uh, previous agenda item. This is the naming rights agreement, which, uh, is carved out in the original memorandum of understanding, uh, for the public-private partnership. It gives authority to the Smithburg boosters to reach out to, uh, organizations for donations for, uh, a naming obligation in trade. Several, I believe there are 15 naming opportunities that are available under this agreement, each of which carries a, a different, uh, donation value and then subsequently a different length of term for that naming right. Uh, also provides for, uh, the board's rights as well as the rights of the Booster Club as well as terminations should they become necessary, uh, under the naming rights. And, and in reference to board policy, KC and FF, uh, that relate to those matters. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Is there a motion?
This is William, I have moved for the approval of the naming rights agreement with the Smithburg Athletic Boosters Club, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second to Mr. Gessford's motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, who was that? Mr. Bickford, was that you? Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Prue or Dr. Michael? Any discussion? Mr. Gessford, I see your hand.
Uh, yes, just to follow up, uh, with, uh, Mr. Prue, um, how does these numbers, um, coincide with the other naming rights that we've had? Or is this something that each individual school can choose to come up with? I mean, I know that we've had naming rights before, but I can't remember, like Clear Spring, I think, had some naming rights. I think, uh, of course Barbara Ingram, of, of course. And now this, are, are we kind of working the same thing when it comes to dollar amount? Or is it just the individual school boosters that are coming up with these numbers?
The individual booster clubs, uh, usually put together the, the initial plan, but we counsel them to look at what other organizations have done. So this specific naming rights agreement, uh, the, the types of agreements that are available, the monetary values and the terms are modeled after the, uh, expansion that was done at Williamsport High School five or six years ago.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Mr. Bickford?
Just have to pay tribute to the person that taught me how to drive, and I hope I'm a good driver, Coach Carol Reed. Well, uh, it's currently named the Coach Carol Reed Field, I believe. Are, are we, will that be protected? It sounds like the stadium would be named. Would the field remain the Coach Reed's field?
I believe that's the intention, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sort of Carol Reed Field at Peter Bickford Stadium.
That's for $250,000, Mr. Bickford. You can get your name on that, too.
Any other questions? Any further discussion? Okay, then we'll move to the vote on the motion to approve the naming rights agreement with the Smithburg Athletic Boosters Club, Inc. All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote of approval with the student member concurring. Thank you, Mr. Prue.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next item on the agenda is consideration of the board's standing committee assignments. The committee assignments that I'm recommending, I'll read and then we'll have a motion of approval. For Curriculum Instruction Committee, Dr. April Zentmeyer chairing with members Linda Murray and Stan Stauffer. The Facilities Committee, Michael Gessford as chairman with members Darrell Evans and Dr. Zentmeyer as members. The Finance Committee, Darrell Evans chairing with Melissa Williams and Stan Stauffer as members. The Human Resources Committee, Linda Murray as chairwoman with members Peter Bickford and Michael Gessford. And the Policy Review and Development Committee with Peter Bickford chairing with members Stan Stauffer and Melissa Williams. These are my recommendations, my proposed assignments. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the recommended standing committee assignments.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs., thank you, Doctors Zentmeyer. Any questions? Any discussion of the assignments? I'd like to thank Vice President Stauffer for agreeing again this year to serve on three committees. Most of us serve on two, but that leaves an open spot on one of the committees and Mr. Stauffer has very graciously agreed to serve on three committees. So thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Okay, at this time, we'll move to the vote. We're voting to approve my recommended standing committee assignments and chairmanships. All those in favor? Okay, we have a unanimous vote with the student member concurring. Thank you. So we're to the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams, President Williams, the members of the board. Uh, tonight, we want to begin our, uh, presentation or superintendent report with some celebration. Uh, we've have two finalists for the Presidential Award in Math and Science Teaching. Uh, we historically have had, uh, people involved in recognition and we're very excited that we have two individuals this year. And I'm going to call on Amy Seiler, Supervisor of K-12 Math and Science, to make her presentation this evening. Susan Seiler?
Good evening, members of the board. The Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching are the highest honors bestowed by the United States government specifically for K-12 Science, Technology, Engineering, Mathematics, and Computer Science Teaching. The president may recognize up to 108 exemplary teachers each year. So with this in mind, I am excited to join you this evening to honor not one, but as Dr. Michael said, two of our very own K-6th grade teachers who are finalists for the State of Maryland for the 2020 Presidential Awards. First, we have Kristin Cordell, a fourth and fifth grade STEM teacher who is a finalist for the K-6 Award in the area of science. Ms. Cordell has been teaching for 10 years in Washington County, most recently for the past three years at MK Dowell Elementary School. She's currently serving as the grade four and five STEM teacher in their magnet program at MK Dowell Elementary, teaching both math and science. Throughout her teaching career with us in WCPS, uh, she has held various teacher leadership roles, including STEM connector, STEM committee chairperson, presenter at various county-level professional developments, curriculum writer, among other roles. So we want to congratulate, uh, Ms. Kristin Cordell this evening. We also want to honor Naomi Castleman, a sixth grade math teacher who was a finalist for the K-6 Award in the area of mathematics. Ms. Castleman has been teaching for 16 years, the last 12 of which have been with us in Washington County at Northern Middle School in grade six mathematics. Um, throughout her teaching career, um, with us in WCPS, Ms. Castleman has held various teacher leadership roles also, including, uh, math department leader, a magnet teacher for the middle years program, a math counts coach, among many other leadership roles as well. So congratulations to Ms. Naomi Castleman as well. We wish Ms. Cordell and Ms. Castleman all the best as they enter into the next phase of the process and we look forward to learning of the final awardees, uh, later this year. We believe that that will be announced maybe, uh, this summer. Also, but in the meantime, while we're waiting to hear about those awards, I do encourage those listening this evening to consider nominating an exceptional teacher in grades of grade seven through 12 in math, science, technology, engineering, or computer science for the 2021 award. The nomination window is open now. So thank you, um, board for the opportunity to recognize these two outstanding teachers in science and mathematics.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Seiler. Uh, two, want to add my congratulations to both of our teachers and wish them luck, excuse me, in the next, uh, phase of the process. And it'd be great to have some national winners at this point. So we're excited for them as they move forward in the process. Really, the rest of my comments this evening are announcements and things. I know people are disappointed with our return to learn plan. We were all optimistic that our numbers would subside, flatten out, something. But unfortunately, our COVID numbers have, um, continued to rise. We have kind of reached, I hope, a peak at this point. We've had a couple of up and down days, last couple of days. Washington County, unfortunately, has led the state of Maryland in positivity and absolutely leads the state of Maryland, you know, not in a bad way, in numbers per 100,000. We're still up there 90 to almost 100 per 100,000 cases, uh, per resident. And most of the rest of the counties, even those that are pretty high positivity, have a much lower per 100,000. So we're watching both the positivity rate, the number of, of, uh, cases per 100,000 residents. And unfortunately, we've had to back our January 11th date up to January 26th. We'll provide more information as we move forward. I am optimistic that we are going to get back in school soon. I hope that we return in stage four. That certainly will remain to be seen. Uh, I do want the community to know, this is more than just about those numbers. We also have to be able to function as a system. And one of the challenges we experienced right before we went out, uh, in November, when we had to return to virtual learning, we were struggling to staff schools, um, not because of positivity. We've done an excellent job, credit to all of our staff and teams and, uh, students even, that were in school to avoid the spread of COVID in our schools. We simply did not have the spread of COVID in our schools with a couple of very rare exceptions, really involved around, you know, people eating together, a time period, maybe they had their mask off, felt that that was safe based on information they have. But beyond that, we had almost virtually zero spread, uh, in our school system, which is a great thing. But when the community, spouse, uh, other children, in contact with children, their parents, whoever. their parents, whoever, we had a significant number of people that were beginning to be quarantined, and the staff was being quarantined, we were struggling to have staff and substitutes to teach students. So this is another whole factor that I'm sure the community can't see or realize, and I appreciate that, but it's another factor that we have to consider beyond the metrics. Credit to our staff, they showed up, they worked, they were available to their students, they worked. In some cases, where the necessity was to work side by side with our students, and I just give all the credit to our staff, I possibly can, but I also recognize the need that we have to follow the health department's protocols. In doing so, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we may need to quarantine people beyond air control, which would affect the classroom instruction. So that's just another factor that we have to, you know, consider as we look at this. I'm eager to get students back. I miss our students being in school. I saw the success, particularly of our pre-K and kindergarten students who are back, all that wanted to be back, and I'm confident we can do that in stage four, along with first grade, all being back, all those students that want to return. But we have to do it in a smart way. We have to do it where we'll be successful with the students, with staff, and be able to, you know, sustain that. So we're going to continue to monitor that. I'm optimistic our next target date for students will be Tuesday, January 26. I have been following some other counties that were, at one point, the leader in Maryland in a bad way, having the highest numbers of COVID, and I have seen a substantial reduction in some of those counties. So I'm hoping we will follow suit with that as well. Today, I didn't get a chance to fully review it, but I understand the governor has placed teachers on the 1B, in other words, the second, the next phase of the vaccine, actually, educational staff. So I'm hoping between everyone cooperating and helping to get our COVID numbers down in Washington County, the vaccination, not only of educators, but others around the county, I'm again optimistic we'll be able to return. On another note, our 100-day roadmap to accelerated learning committee is off and running. I won't say off and running, it is soon to be up and running. I do appreciate the over 200 staff members, community members, students, parents that have volunteered and shown interest in being part of the committee. Dr. Willow is formulating those committees along with Neil Becker, our co-chair. There's a great deal of work to do here. I cannot express enough. This is not a committee, just to formulate a booklet and just some rough ideas for somebody to consider. This is going to be a driving force that's going to help us recover from the learning loss that's occurred so far. I am very concerned. People are talking about this is going to take years to recover from. That's true if that's how you approach it, or it's false if you do approach it that way, because you might not ever recover. I'm, I'm very determined, the staff's determined, that we need to do a full acceleration, full-on assault might be too strong a word, but it, it needs to be a strong word of how we're going to address the needs of children, and that's from our most thriving learner to our most striving learner. We want to make sure that they don't have any gaps in their academic learning, they're fully prepared to graduate, if they're a senior this year and they're fully prepared for their future, regardless what grade level they're in. I do want to share with parents, we do have a tremendous amount of academic support, emotional, social support available to our students, and if you are not receiving the support that you feel like you need, please contact your teacher. If that's not working out for you for some reason, you're struggling to communicate or anything at all like that, your key contact is the principal. We've shared this before. I just can't encourage you enough. Do not let your child fall behind. We do have academic supports. We do have social, emotional supports we can offer through counseling, through services. We've purchased services from, we, it might not even be your teacher that supports your child, it could be somebody else. And again, this might be our most struggling learner, it might be our most thriving learner. You need additional AP support to prep for AP exams, and, and we, we want to provide that support. So please contact your school. We want to make those supports available, too. I want to thank all the staff members involved in our professional development on December 23rd. That is like the death slot of PD the day before a long holiday period, but all credit to our teachers, our administrators, our supervisors, our ESP employees that pulled together an excellent series of workshops. It was a great deal of choice for all three groups to participate in a variety of the professional development sessions, and I want to thank the participants as well. They made it a very successful day, not only the offerings, but the participation of all of our staff members. So I appreciate that. That has given us encouragement to continue to provide choice in professional development in the future, and we've just had a lot of positive feedback. We also had positive feedback about the personal health and wellness opportunities we provided. Those are available still online. Those have been recorded, and I think that's been pushed out to staff, and I encourage you to take availability of those opportunities. They were just well, well-presented, and a lot of positive feedback from people that participated. I also want to remind parents and students of our meal plan still continues. Our 22 sites are, continue to be open. We're open 11:30 to 12:30 at the 22 sites. You can find those on our, on our website. Martin Luther King Day coming up on January 18th. We will not be open, that's a Monday, but the Friday before, we'll be offering double meals. So you will be able to pick up two breakfasts, two lunch, two stoppers per child. This is available for every child that's 18 years old and younger. You do not have to attend Washington County public schools. You just have to be 18 years old and younger. So you could be one-year-old, two-year-old, three-year-old, and these meals are available to you free of charge, regardless of your income level, at our 22 sites. So I'd encourage people to take advantage of that. And finally, board members, I'd just like to remind the public that we're coming up on our last day, that we accept nominations for Teacher of the Year. Be an interesting Teacher of the Year opportunity, maybe Teacher of the Year because of COVID, or Teacher of the Year because of the history of their teaching, but we encourage people to fill out the brief nomination form that can be found on our website. Those nominations are due by January 8th. And with that, that concludes my remarks for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. This time, we'll move to Personnel Action with Dr. Pugh presenting. Dr. Pugh?
Good evening again, Mrs. Williams, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
I think Linda made the motion, but we couldn't hear.
I'm sorry. I think Mr. Gessford was also attempting.
Yes.
So you're making the motion for approval, Mrs. Murray?
Yes, I am. I apologize.
Thank you. And is there a second to Mrs. Murray's motion?
Second. This is Dr. Zentmeyer added.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Zentmeyer, for the second. Are there any questions, any discussion before we move to the vote? We're voting to approve Personnel Action as discussed earlier this afternoon. All those in favor? All right, we have a unanimous decision of approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Moving to reports to the board. We've just received our committee assignments this evening. Are there any chairs that are ready to announce a meeting of a committee? Not that I expect that, but are there any committees that would like to say anything? Mr. Stouffer?
Yes, I know this is the moment the whole board's been waiting on to hear the report of the Mayb legislative committee. So as I give it, I want to see all smiles and nothing else. It's going to be quite lengthy because there's a lot to report, and this was one of the best meetings I've listened to or been a part of in quite a while. The Mayb Legislative Committee met virtually yesterday from 10 to 12. I was, attended the meeting, as did our president, Mrs. Williams. First of all, there were, this is Francie Glenn Denning, John Wolam, Karen Yoho. Karen Yoho is the Chair of the Mayb Legislative Committee. They met with the leadership of the House and Senate. I won't go through all the names. Basically, some of the comments were that they were productive. Karen Yoho said that she felt better about the financial situation of the state. It's not great, but it's better. John Wolam's reported that there's strong support in the legislature to hold the school systems harmless when it comes to maintenance of effort, and Glenn, Francie Glenn Denning, who is the executive director of Mayb, said that schools will be more than held harmless. So we're waiting to see what, just what that, what that means. There's a great deal of concern among legislators about the learning loss. The, and I'll report on this a little bit later. We had a special guest, Senator Paul Pinsky. I'll get to him in a second, but you might see some mandated intervention by the state legislature when it comes to the learning loss. There's also a thing developing, lawyers, attorneys, in various localities advocating lawsuits against boards of education because of COVID, and that is of a concern, and I think you'll see some protection for boards of education because of that. John Wolam's reported about the upcoming session. There are 800 prefiled bills. Mayb identified 220 of them to track that could concern education. Some of these are House Bill 237, changes in the hiring emergent employees. I won't go into the details about that. Senate Bill 165, Maryland Healthy Working Families Act. House Bill 406 is a special ed legislation that parents who prevail in certain special ed cases can receive lawyer fees and related costs. House Bill 370 and Senate Bill 225 will require, if passed, the planning of seizure action plans in school systems and teaching children about seizures and what to do if they witness one. Senate Bill 243, if passed, would mandate that the MSDE require schools to provide a program and teach about the dangers of gambling and gambling addiction. House Bill 237, Senate Bill 126 would require MSDE, if passed, to publish a handbook about the best practices for handling early literacy and the best practices for handling, handling dyslexia. House Bill 96, if passed, would set up a graduation requirement that each student, each graduating student, complete and submit a FASSA form, a financial federal assistance in, what is it, financial aid, and it's a financial aid form. I forget what the acronym really is, and receive adequate point, support for doing so. So there's an equity issue involved there. There's a feeling, apparently from what I gather, that certain groups of students are not getting adequate, adequate assistance and being, and, and I won't say forced, but giving the opportunity to fill out those forms. House Bill 171 would be a data collection about school discipline. Basically, what it boils down to is that data would be collected by the Department of Education. It would be broken down, and then it, the data would be used to identify really if there's any discrimination in disciplining certain groups of students. House Bill 342, notification of problematic sexual behavior, would require, if passed, that parents be notified on the same day of students who are involved in problematic sexual behavior that is defined as involving intimate parts in a manner that is in, that is developmentally inappropriate. House Bill 72 gets into transporting students other than, than in type one or type two school vehicles, and House Bill 192, if passed, would require the use of video recording devices, at least one video device, to be installed in each classroom in which a majority of the regularly attending students are given special ed instruction. So I'm just wondering if that maybe has any, I don't know who's sponsoring, but you know the situation in Berkeley County last year, whether there was a situation involving that, and several agents of the teacher, I think, were disciplined for that. We then went over the session committee procedures and so forth, and I'll skip to something that was quite in. Our guest speaker was Senator Paul Pinsky. He is the Chair of the Senate Education, Health, and Environmental Committee, longtime educational proponent. He hopes the budget, as proposed by the governor, will reflect hold harmless status for school boards. Of course, you know, in Maryland, we have an executive budget. The blueprint for Maryland's future, the override may not occur until February, because apparently the House, from what I gather, and Mrs. Williams, correct me if I misheard this, but the House will not meet in full session until February. There's something about that. So he believes that the students got crushed because of COVID. He favors extensive tutoring for learning loss. He favors expanding summer school this coming summer to deal with the learning loss. He thinks there may be legislation about the learning, closing the learning loss gap, and someone asked him about what, how they're going to assess who needs this, this assistance, what students need it, and he said that it's complicated to decide what students, what students will need the services because they're behind in learning. He also said he wants to hear from boards of education and superintendents about their ideas about dealing with the learning loss and about the lawsuits that lawyers are advocating. Some lawyers are thinking about filing, alleging that boards of education and school systems didn't do everything they did to meet equity standards and this type of thing. He said that he doesn't see courts giving credence to lawsuits against school systems because they acted in good faith efforts to provide education. So he's saying that if boards of education and school system provided good faith efforts to provide education to all students, he doesn't think that those lawsuits will go anywhere in the circuit court or up to the appellate courts. That's all I'll say. Mrs. Williams, have anything to add to that?
Thank you for that very thorough report, Mr. Stouffer. I learned something, in addition to all of what you shared, I learned something that I didn't know about Senator Pinsky, and that is that he is a former educator with 40 years of experience, I believe, at least 40 years, maybe beyond that. So, yes, thank you for your very thorough report. Anyone else have anything? Mr. Bakum, do you have anything that you would like to share?
Not today. Thank you, President Williams.
Absolutely. Okay, so we'll move then from committee reports to future agenda items. You should have received in your packet a list of some future agenda items. On February 2nd, we have a report coming up on the Behavior Support Program, and then also listed on that future agenda items list would be the legislative briefings that will be happening each month beginning in February. There's one in February, one in March, one in April, and one in May. If you have anything that you would like to have placed on the agenda of a future meeting, please let either Mr. Stouffer or Dr. Michael or me know, and we will do our best to get that item on the agenda. I think I've covered everything. We have covered everything on our agenda, and we will move to board member comments. And how about if we start at the end of the alphabet with Dr. Zentmeyer? Dr. Zentmeyer, comments?
I believe there's a superhero in each of us when we find the courage to put on the cape. This month until the end of the month, Christmas lights will remain on supporting those healthcare workers who are on the front line. My lights will also remain on for those superheroes in my life, the teachers and administrators who have gone above and beyond. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you, Dr. Zetmeyer. Okay, Mr. Stauffer?
I would just say that I didn't know that about the lights, but my lights will stay on, and they give me a reason for not getting out to take them down perhaps. No, seriously, I agree with her. It's been a rough year 2020, and that's a way of honoring people. Precisely, I will say this, though, I will miss the 8 o'clock facility committee meetings and the 8 o'clock finance committee meetings. No, that's all.
Mrs. Murray?
Well, to make you happy, Mr. Stauffer, we can have 8 o'clock human resource meetings. How's that?
I don't see you getting up that early.
Oh, you just don't know. Anyway, I would like to say thank you to Dr. Zetmeyer for what she said. I agree wholeheartedly. My lights are still up and will remain on. So thank you very much. And thank you to all the staff members that have helped our students. It's an impossible task, but you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Gessford?
Yes, I'd like to take an opportunity to thank the parents and the teachers who continue to send emails to us, giving their support and comments about getting back to school. We do read all of those. I know all of our board members get these, and we do appreciate so much the comments, even the good and the bad. So please keep, keep your, your voice heard and send those in to us. Also, just a real quick congratulations to the Smithburg Athletic Booster Club. I know you got a big task ahead of you. I, I look forward to participating in some of your fundraisers and, and a final product out there in Smithburg. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, and I'd like to take a time to congratulate all the presidential award recipients there. That's a, that's a huge deal and shows the, the hard work that you do. So excellent job, congratulations, and keep up the hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Bickford?
I too would like to celebrate the generosity that we, we think will be happening with Smithburg. And, and, and I think it sort of shows just what a generous community we have. The last time we approved a major gift for Boonsboro High School and, and moving forward with that project, as well as a million dollar gift to the Barbara Ingram School. So we, and then there's just people that, the fundraisers that continue in every school, that parents and community members pitch in to help, so to provide those extra services to students. And now, my daughter gives me grief because I didn't put Christmas lights up on the outside of our house, so maybe now I need to. But that was very well said, Dr. Zetmeyer. Thank you for, for, for your words to our healthcare workers, as well as to all of our educators.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Mr. Bakum?
Thank you, President Williams. I would like to echo of Mr. Evans' comments and congratulations to those winners of the President's Science and Math Awards. I had the pleasure of having Ms. Castleman as my sixth grade math teacher, so I'm very excited for her and congratulations. And I'd like to fully congratulate those healthcare workers working day in and day out. My mom's personally a healthcare worker. And also bouncing off of that, I'm really happy that the governor included educators and education workers, along with the vaccine schedule. That is an essential component in getting students back to school and personally getting our teachers vaccinated, and that definitely helps.
Thank you, Mr. Bakum. And as for my comments, I, I'd like to say that before winter break, I had the opportunity to visit virtually some classrooms at Salem Avenue, Salem Avenue teachers. I'd like to thank Mrs. Julie Rowe, Mr. Tony McDonald, Mr. Logan Tridle, and Mr. Nick Groth for allowing me to be with them and their students virtually. With regard to the Teacher of the Year nominations, if I could, I would nominate every Washington County Public School teacher for that award because they are all deserving of it. And also, I'd like to extend my congratulations to Mrs. Cordell and Mrs. Castleman and wish them all the best. I'm not going to wish them luck, because I don't think they need luck. I think they have everything they need to come out a winner. So that's all I have. Dr. Michael, is there anything that you would like to say before we end our meeting?
No, I would probably just echo all the positive comments the board members have shared. I'd just thank you, thank you, thank you to our staff and our community. We got to keep plugging ahead, and we're going to beat this thing. We are going to beat it, and we're going to get our kids back, and we're going to do the very best we can to ensure their future just as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, if there's nothing further, we'll stand adjourned. Is there anything anyone else has that they would like to offer? All right, then we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.